Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks so much for joining us. Please be seated. We hope that while you've been waiting for us, you've had an opportunity to read our acknowledgement to our friends and neighbors in the Squamish, Laitutuq and Musquam nations and a new piece of art tonight. This is a public hearing and I will turn it over to our corporate officer to read the necessary prerequisites.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. On behalf of the corporate officer, I'll read of the procedure now. Counsel is convening this public hearing to consider and receive submissions regarding proposed phase development agreement authorization bylaw number 5041 2019, amendment bylaw number 5400 2025, for the address 3875 Uplands Way. Counsel is convening the public hearing. Pardon me, anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be heard and/or may make a written submission either in person or via email to correspondence@westvancouver.ca. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Counsel members may ask questions of you following your presentation, but counsel's function during this public hearing is to listen to the views of the public, not to debate the proposed bylaw. After the public hearing has concluded, counsel may, without further notice, give whatever effect counsel believes proper to the presentations. Your only opportunity to comment on the proposed bylaw is during the public hearing. Counsel is not permitted to receive further submissions once the council, once counsel has closed the public hearing. Counsel has received documents which are available for the public to view. A hard copy of these may be obtained from the corporate officer during the public hearing. And the documents can only also be viewed online at westvancouver.ca/news/notices. Please note that the online copy of the documents will not include items received afternoon today, after 1:00 p.m. today. To maintain order during the public hearing and to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, here are the rules of procedure. Speaker's list has been established. For those attending in person, you may place your name on the list at any time throughout the public hearing. If you're speaking from prepared remarks, counsel requests that a copy be provided to the corporate officer. To participate via Zoom, please phone 604-925-7004, provide your name and number to staff who will add you to the speaker's list. When it's your turn to address counsel, staff will allow you to unmute your microphone, turn on your webcam so that you can provide counsel with your input. Please notice that, please note that staff cannot provide you with a specific time slot when you register to speak. So we ask that participants who wish to address counsel be available for the duration of the public hearing. Second, counsel requests that you please begin your remarks by providing your name and municipality of residence. If you're speaking on behalf of some other person or organization, counsel requests that you please identify the name of that person or organization. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to the subject of the proposed bylaw. Please be respectful of others. After everyone has spoken once, you will have an opportunity to speak subsequent times to provide additional information if you wish. Please follow the same steps just mentioned to be re-added to the speaker's list. If you have any concerns about the rules of the hearing, please address your comments to the chair. Mayor Sager, just before I hand it over to staff for the presentation, I should note that counsel has received one report on the matter. We are now up to fifteen written submissions on the matter. And counsel set the date for this public hearing back in July, July 21. And we ran our statutory notices of public hearing in the North Shore News on August 27 and September 3. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Allen, thanks for joining us this evening. Are you going to give the staff recommendation and presentation?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the self-presentation for the public hearing for 3875 Uplands Way. So the subject parcels are located within Area 6 of Rogers Creek, the area bounded by Chippendale Road and Uplands Way, north of Cypress Bowl Road. The subject parcels are shown in red, lot 1 and 9, which is 3181 and 3389 Chippendale Road, and lots 12 and 13, 3875 and 3861. The public hearing tonight is on the PDA bylaw, Phase Development Agreement Authorization bylaw. And that specifically pertains to 3875 Uplands Way, lot 12, not lot 14, as shown here. The PDA Authorization bylaw enabled a phase development agreement, a PDA, between the District and British Pacific Properties Limited. Schedule B to this agreement required BPP to construct a purpose-built rental building on lot 12, 3875 Uplands Way. Staff are proposing to amend the Rogers Creek PDA to remove this requirement to align with the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw. And this bylaw requires a public hearing. So the application process to date is that counsel gave first reading of the PDA bylaw amendment on July 21st, setting the date for public hearing for tonight. Tonight, we're also considering, or on the agenda is scheduled, the zoning bylaw amendment that the PDA bylaw reflects, proposes to reflect. And future council meetings to authorize this development application. Consideration of adoption of the bylaws, which include the PDA Amendment bylaw and the zoning amendment bylaw, which is scheduled later this evening. Consideration of the approval of development permits for three of the subject sites, 3861, 3875 Uplands Way, and 3389 Chippendale Road. And counsel will also consider a resolution to authorize staff to undertake administrative tasks, including amending covenants registered on titles of the property to reflect the development application. And that's it from me.
Thanks very much, Mr. Allen. And do we have a presentation from the applicant?
We do not. No, this is staff-directed or counsel.
I understand. Yeah. Thank you. We'll then turn it over and we have a speaker's list, do we?
Oh geez, that was faster than I thought it would be. The first name on our list, we have six names on our speaker's list. The last would be the gentleman who signed up to speak via Zoom, the first from the chamber, Karen Harrison, followed by Scott Swan.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison, great to see you tonight. Wonderful. No, hope you had a wonderful summer.
I sure did. I went to Malaysia and Singapore.
Oh, wow.
So I think most of the council members know me, but my name is Karen Harrison. And I've lived in West Vancouver for fifty-six years, and I live in Horseshoe Bay. And something I'd like to add is that I was a member of the LAP Plan for Horseshoe Bay, so know about density and so on. But I'm here to support the BD's project at Chippendale Road and Uplands. Firstly, I trust BD. I think they're a reputable quality builder in our community with a strong history of delivering high-quality projects. And I'm confident that their proposal and these changes will also be at that same exceptional standard. As a longtime resident and very involved West Vancouver community member, I'm supportive of this proposal. The change to strata housing creates new opportunities for homeownership and response to the evolving needs in housing needs in West Vancouver, especially for residents who want to downsize but stay in the community and own their own home. And interestingly, I've had two friends recently that have sold very big houses in West Hill and could not find a condominium large enough to move into. They end up having to buy, well, not having, not that I feel sorry for them, but they bought small homes because they couldn't find, you know, rental condos that were large enough. This proposal contributes to greater housing density in West Vancouver. And I think it provides another choice for residents. And we do want to keep them in our, our community. And my understanding is that this application aligns with the existing density permitted under the area development plan. And what is different about this is, first of all, I think it's very attractive. I did look at the, the photos of what is being planned for up the mountain. And I would say that the most important thing is that it frees up, hopefully, the community amenity to be applied to rental housing. And as a renter, I really feel there's a great need for that. And I hope that the community amenity that would come from this project would be used towards developing rental properties. So with that in mind, I would say that I think this is, it should move ahead. I think it's a great contribution to the diversity of our community, and I see no downside to the project at all.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thanks. Nice to see you. Could I have a call on the next speaker, please?
Scott Swan, followed by Frida Pagani.
Mr. Swan, nice to see you. Hope you had a great summer, too.
Not quite as well as I was supposed to. I was supposed to go away for five weeks and wound up being here the entire time. My wife damaged her back, but it was a beautiful summer anyway. Thank you for the time to speak. I just wanted to clarify that I am not here in my official capacity as the Chair of the Arts Advisory Committee. I'm here as a private citizen, representing myself and a number of other individuals and families in the community. It's come to our attention that the CAC from this proposal of Uplands, which you are discussing tonight, is approximately thirteen million dollars. And as you all well know, West Vancouver is an artistic community as well as an athletic one. We immerse ourselves in both of these practices, as audiences, as parents, as teachers, as family, and as participants. In our opinion, and there's a large number of people that hold this opinion, and I'm sure, although I don't represent the Arts Advisory Committee, they would endorse what I'm to say, that having spent upwards of eighteen million dollars on a place for sport, which is a wonderful facility, a wonderful facility that a great, large number of us use on a regular basis, it's time now to designate a considerable portion of this revenue to a place for art, namely, the new art center, which has been included in the LAP. We look forward to your positive response to this proposal. We understand that many of you on council and Mr. Bear have a strong sense of the vitality and the energy that the arts provide for a community. And we strongly look forward to your endorsing this part of our proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. We appreciate your input. Thank you.
Frida Pagani.
Can't read my writing.
You came up a bit early, but it's nice to see you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm echoing what Scott has just said. Just as sport is considered essential for our community and therefore gets money for buildings, art is also essential and should similarly get money for buildings. Imagine if you can West Vancouver with no public art, no theater, no music, no cultural events like Harmony Arts. It would be much more boring than lots of people say it already is. I want to thank Mayor and Council for their recent support for the idea of moving the art museum to a temporary home. Sadly, that did not work out. But now I'm asking them for another courageous idea, which is earmarking actual money towards a place for art from the CACs from this rezoning or bylaw amendment. And I just want to thank Mayor and Council for all the service that they give to the community. Thank you.
I do take it, Mr. Swan, both of you, because you're speaking in favor of the CAC, that means you're in favor of the project.
Yes.
We'll make the connection. That's right. We don't get the money without the project. The next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Diana Sonderhoff, followed by Heidi Inman and Matt Davies.
Thank you. Thanks very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Diana Sonderhoff and I am a longtime resident of the British Properties, in fact, sixty years. And I have spoken before in favor of this project, and so I'm sort of following up and to say that I am in favor of the conversion of the rental components to strata. And I know that rental is needed in the district, but I think that this area is more suited to condos at this time. I know that people looking to downsize are finding it difficult to find a suitable home. And I think that this project will be a welcome addition to the housing options when completed. I think it's very well designed. And I'm just really hoping that my support will help this project because I am hoping that counsel will approve this application.
Thanks very much. And also, thank you for your emails. We do receive them and they're, I can tell you, I, I think we all agree, they're very thoughtful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Heidi Inman. Followed by Matt Davies.
Ms. Inman, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. I just have to get my notes here.
Ms. Inman's brother used to come to every council meeting thirty years ago. I hope he's well.
He could have come tonight, but I, I don't think you have all night. Anyway, my name is Heidi Inman. I'm with the, I'm president of the British Properties Homeowner Association. And I live on Stevens Drive in the British Properties. I've lived there all my life, and I'm not going to say how many years because it's going to give away my age. So I'll just not say that. Anyway, with our association, of course, we like to stay up to date with everything that's happening in the British Properties, especially with the new developments going up on Cypress Village and whatnot. So we did meet with BD. We had a great meeting with them. It was very positive. We asked a lot of questions. And it was for the Area 6 project. Um, the density transfer that they're planning on doing makes full sense to me. I like the idea of the market strata housing. It will bring revenue to council for different infrastructure, for different service improvements, whatever, and different projects for future planning. So definitely for that, we did talk about that in quite a lot of detail when we had the meeting with BD. I think they're wonderful. I think they've done their homework. They know what they're doing. I think they're going to do a wonderful job. Don't really have anything negative to say about them at all. Also, the proposed larger home layouts, that is an absolute given. I've got friends that have downsized for whatever reason. They've moved into smaller places. They're now selling those and looking for something larger. Due to the fact where they came from a large home, the husband doesn't have his man cave anymore. The wife doesn't have her place to dash off to. So, and then, you know, the kids come home. So it's like, okay, we need something larger. So I'm all for that. And the fact that they will have a proper places, the parking and whatnot, and really working in the design of, of building these homes and structures in the wonderful area that it is up there, that it's wilderness, it's, it's on the side of the mountain. So that's important to me as well. So I really do hope that this is given the green light. I'd like it to get going and, and start because I would like to see some of this development in my lifetime. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Inman. It's really nice seeing you.
The next speaker is Matt Davies, followed by Afonso Issa.
Thank you. Mr. Davies, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Matt Davies, President and General Manager of Cypress Mountain Resort. I'm also a recent transplant to the British Properties, but I'm, I'm here primarily to speak on behalf of my role at Cypress Mountain. We are a major recreation destination for West Vancouver residents and visitors, accessed by a Cypress Bowl Road near the proposed development area. As a resort serving the local community and the regional community, we depend on a thriving population base. We need well-designed housing that meets the needs of residents and strengthens the community, which in turn supports recreation, tourism, and our local economic prosperity. We value responsible development that aligns with approved plans and contributes positively to community sustainability. Given that the BD proposal is consistent with the Rogers Creek Area Development Plan and zoning bylaw requirements, given that there is no increase in overall density being sought, only a redistribution of permitted density across lots, and that there is no, currently no public transit connection to that area that would support, you know, rental housing, we're in support of this proposal. We believe it's a balanced, responsible adjustment that maintains density while delivering a much-needed community benefit. And I appreciate the responsibility of municipal staff and council in ensuring alignment with our community values and encourage approval of the Uplands proposal. Cypress Mountain is in support.
Thanks very much. And are we going to have a good ski season?
Oh, it's, it's looking up. It's a coin toss between a La Niña and a Lanada. So we'll take it. Anything but La Niña.
Well, and thank you very much and all the best. I sure hope we have a good ski season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the last speaker on our list is via Zoom, Afonso Issa.
Sorry, the gentleman's last name?
Issa, I-S-S-A.
Mr. Issa, are you there? Can you?
Mr. Issa, you should be able to turn on your microphone now and your webcam if it's there. There we go. You are muted. Please unmute. Perfect.
Hello, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. So my name is Afonso Issa. I'm new here in West Vancouver. I'm a new pastor at West Vancouver Presbyterian Church. And I'd like to, to read a letter after hosting this, this plan in our building, I could see what, what was the proposal. And I, and I wrote a simple letter. I'm not a specialist in development, but, but I'd like to, to read a letter in support.
Thank you. Please do, sir.
So a letter of support says, "It is an honor to greet with wishing you peace and wisdom from God, who blesses the whole creation with spirit of life and reconciliation. As a community leader, working as a religious teacher, I strongly support the development of projects that are environmentally sustainable, environmentally sustainable, economically feasible, and especially socially responsible. As we deal with a housing crisis in Canada and we suffer criticism as a city for being slow or passive, I believe it is an amazing sign of compassion to think about increasing density in West Vancouver. When a public consultation happened in our church building this summer, I appreciated the opportunity to review the plans. I believe it is a fair response to our housing crisis. I support the counselor's suggestion that funds generated from this development be used to create rental housing across West Vancouver. Condo homes are an important part of the housing continuum, and we need more homes in West Van, across the board. I am writing this letter to support the implementation of your plan that shows commitment to provide housing to a country and city that is suffering with a shortage of fit. As this housing project will soon be near amenities like grocery stores, space for schools, and public transit integration, I believe that it is an exemplary step for our city. Please count with my encouragement to keep working to provide more houses to our city. So I, I signed, Afonso Issa. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Minister. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is that to conclude? And then I will call, is anyone else here this evening that wishes to address counsel on this public hearing? I'll ask three times. Can I ask for a second time? Is there anyone else who wishes to address counsel? And a third time. Just before I ask for members of council to close the public hearing, I can't help but comment. This project, no, I think I'll wait, I'll hold my comments until we're discussing it outside of the public hearing when we debate this matter later. But I'm very grateful for everyone who's taken the time to come this evening. And I think it speaks volumes about the excellent work of our planning staff, the applicant, and everybody involved. Counselor Gambioli?
Some questions over here.
Please.
Before you close everything down. Okay, sorry, got my paperwork happening. So I guess there are questions for staff. Just to keep staff, you know, on their toes.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
And because the proponent is not here. So.
There are representatives of the proponent here. I recognize if, if you want to, we could ask the proponent.
Yes. All right, sure. Well, I guess it will depend on the question. So I'm just looking over all of the, you know, written and taking notes from what people have said today. So there's a couple of questions that arise, and one of them is, so, you know, when this was, this area was first zoned by us a number of years ago, we, we felt it was important to have the, the rental component. So, you know, effectively, by supporting this proposal, we're sort of dissolving this, this proposed rental housing. So, you know, what in an ideal world would staff recommend in terms of, you know, what to do about this rental that's now been lost, essentially?
Mr. Bailey? So through the mayor, I mean, I think it's, you know, wise to recognize that, that, you know, rental was initially considered part of this, this program. I think that as the, as time has evolved, we're acutely aware that we have, you know, a housing challenge in not just the rental sphere of, of housing, but in all sort of, all types of housing across the continuum. So market, rental, below-market housing, all those, those sorts of things. So, I mean, staff are comfortable recommending this, this project where there is the conversion from rental to strata. A large part of that is, is our estimation is that the rental housing, sort of given market conditions and given where we're at, you know, won't be built anytime soon. And we think that we have an acute need for housing within, and market is certainly one of those priorities. So, so we're, we're, we're okay recommending that, that the, the tenure be converted, in this case, from, from rental to strata. Counsel has a number of different options in terms of providing for rental housing. There are, you know, opportunities in our local area plan. I note that, you know, you've just rezoned some of your own district land to, to provide for opportunities. And hopefully, RFP is, is imminent to sort of go, to go to market for those sorts of opportunities. So there are a whole bunch of other places where rental housing does make sense. Counsel does have an affordable housing fund, and if counsel chose, they could direct a portion of the CAC to the Affordable Housing Fund to help top up. That would be, of course, at counsel's discretion. So those are all options that, that are available to counsel at this time.
Okay. Hmm. Okay. And I note from the planning committee, they expressed support, tentative support for transferring this secured rental, but said that they would be more supportive if they were, if there were a clear strategy to provide rental units elsewhere in the district. So do we have any kind of a clear strategy?
You know, through the mayor, our strategy is to take advantage of and provide rental housing where we think it makes sense. That's, you know, typically located in and around services. So again, you can, you'll, you'll know the Ambleside LAP. Cypress Village is a key place where rental housing will be constructed in and around the village. I believe there's five hundred and eighty-four purpose-built rental housing units, and they are to come online as, as the development.
And they are to come online as, as the development proceeds. They don't just happen at the end. So, I mean, writ large, our strategy is to provide rental in strategic locations where, you know, it, it makes sense. We do recognize that rental was originally, you know, slated for this. That's, that's clear. But again, we want to see something happen sooner than later, just from a housing perspective. We also think that, you know, in some cases where people do own these units, that they will in fact, you know, rent them out. They'll, they'll have, you know, they'll, you know, a large, not a large portion, but, you know, a portion of strata units are in fact become part of, of the rental pool.
I, I think I'd just like to highlight, as of course council, Counselor Gambioli knows, and, but just for the benefit of members of the public. Many years ago, I kind of laugh, I call it inversion one, when I was mayor, we purchased the properties around the fire hall. And this council has recently rezoned that, made it available, and that will be going out for tender quite shortly. And one of the thoughts is that that could be an ideal place for rental housing. That, of course, is up to council. But that's one option. And of course, we, we know that the Wall Centre people are bringing forward a proposal for a large-scale rental building there as well. So both potentially, potentially affordable housing units there and rental housing. Sorry, Counselor Gambioli, back over to you.
Okay, last question. Just had one concern from a resident who apparently went to the July sixteenth information session, which was shortly before our July twenty first council meeting. And because the proponents were not at the twenty first meeting, I don't remember seeing any of the feedback collected from that information session or that was made available to council. So I'm just wondering if we're missing any feedback.
Mr. Allen, are you aware of any feedback that council might be missing?
There was some feedback provided that meeting. I'm not sure if it was provided to council. But I can run down some of those, that's some of that feedback that was received. If you wish. Yeah.
I do wish.
So there was a summary and the applicant is in the audience to provide any more clarification around that. So in summary, there were seven comments, general comments received from, from that PIM, as I understand it from the applicant. One was concerned with the loss of, of rental units that were initiated as, as part of the twenty twenty rezoning for Area Six. They had a question about why rental was not viable in Area Six, which the applicant can speak to as well. The, they had a question around the CAC calculations, which were around whether the fact that the additional height on towers was factored into that CAC calculation. The proposal, sorry, the averaging of the step code three. They were wondering about that process for lots twelve and thirteen and whether staff had supported that as part of that application. There was a concern with bird strikes on large expanses of glass for the, for the buildings. And then a question around whether the ITS, the, the independent transit service for Cypress Village would be, the route for that would be included, including Rogers Creek and that transit service when it starts up.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
So that's the extent of the feedback from that July sixteenth meeting?
That's, that's what I've received from the applicant, yes.
I'm, that's what you received from the applicant?
Correct.
So why was that not forwarded to us until just now?
Through the merit, it's my understanding that that information was included in, that those comments were generally included in James's originally, Mr. Allen's original presentation on the, the first reading date. And if you'd like us to sort of respond to any of those individual questions, I'm happy to do that. And a lot of the responses are in, in the council report. So, but please, please to respond to anything specific if, if you'd like any information on any of that.
Okay, I need to go back and look at that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Hearing none, and I'll just ask for one final time, is anyone else wish to address council on this matter? And hearing none, could I ask for motion to close the public hearing, please? Moved second and all in favor, contrary carried, and we'll adjourn now. Council will come back for our evening meeting starting at six o'clock. Should you wish to hang around. Thank you.